Okay, we have the time at 7:01 PM. We're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. Will you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heaton, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Mr. Reimert?
Here.
This is Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All were present.
Okay, tonight's meeting is a regular trustee meeting, a monthly meeting that we have. At this time, we're gonna open the meeting for any visitor comments. If you have any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. I would like to say, this is the biggest crowd we've had since I've been here, so I appreciate the crowd. Hopefully, there's some public comments. Anybody has any, they'll probably call one up.
Mark Cross, 7444 South Stivers Road, Germantown, Ohio. Just wanna be the first to congratulate the chief and the police department and Shawna Close on an excellent national night out last week. Great planning, great event, delicious food. Again, guys did a great job.
Who won you over with the food?
Yes, you did. That was great. If you missed it, it was a great event. So, since there's not gonna be a JED meeting before the public meeting, a public meeting on the sixth, I just had a couple of questions. So, the public meeting's gonna be at 1 o'clock in the gymnasium, the junior high, correct? So, the meeting afterward is to discuss what the public comments or make any changes? So, I'm assuming no votes are gonna be taken at that?
No, what will happen is that the second meeting, it will be a Germantownship meeting with the other entities, just like the JED meetings have been the last thirteen months.
So, everybody won't be present?
No, the plan is just for the JED. Yeah, it'll be a Germantownship meeting, so all our trustees will be present, and then there'll be one representative from each of the others.
Is that gonna be in the gymnasium too, versus trying to move it?
No, I think we're gonna try to move it out of there, so we don't have to rush people out, and we can just continue with the next meeting. And the point of that one is to just discuss if there will need to be any changes and revisions to the draft contract as it is. There will not be any votes on do we approve it at that point in time, and it'll wait till regular meetings or special meetings of those entities vote on it.
So, it's good, the contract is online, but however, is there some way to let the public know that it's online? I've talked to three people, and they had no idea that the contract is online, and they really didn't know how to get there. Can we put that on the Facebook page, that the JED contract is online on the Germantownship webpage?
Yeah, it's on the trustee tab, online.
Oh, I know where to find it, but I'm saying that the general public has no idea that it is even online.
You take that away, make a post tomorrow or something.
Might even be able to get it up tonight, though.
Yeah, okay.
If you'd like, we could also put it on the lease.
Absolutely, absolutely.
More transparency, the better.
Yep.
Otherwise, they would have no idea that it's online.
You, chief, will you also have Shawna email to everybody?
Oh, email on our email list? We could do that, sure.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll take care of that.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica Road. Gentlemen, I have some questions primarily for Mrs. Reed. So, back in May of 2020, we had a meeting. That one, you're young, I'm old, I can remember. We had a meeting where Mr. Stubbs had proposed to cut another check to Sunshine in a Bag, and you and Mr. Burns did not want to do that, and you said you needed to find out if there were more charities. Did you ever look into whether?
Again, and then there was another meeting, I don't have the date in front of me, but I said if we would like to do that, then I'd like to go into executive session and discuss that further.
That's, what's that got to do with executive session? That's public money? I mean, that's not an executive session.
It is public money, which is why I believe it needs to go into executive session.
Can you tell me what section under the executive session?
It's code, well, I think it's 121.G1.
A specific reason?
I don't have the section right in front of me, I was not prepared for the 2020 meeting.
Oh, no, I don't think that's really an executive session thing. Okay, I think it'd be nice if we followed up on that. We've got money earmarked in the budget every year to give to that, to somebody, so it'd be nice to go ahead and give that money, especially after Mr. Cross did so much work on finding out.
Mr. Keener.
Yes.
Hi, ma'am. Mrs. Julia Smith has contacted me. She talked about actually coming to the ninth meeting. She has laryngitis, but she plans to come to the November meeting and make that request to the trustees.
Perfect, all right. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. So, while we're talking about ORC codes, ORC 109.43B requires that all elected officials are required to receive public records training for each Sherman office. Have you taken that?
Yes, I have.
When did you take that? I'm just kinda curious.
I believe it was in, I just took it in September, September 29th or 30th, recently.
Right, thank you.
Is it just me you wanna know if I've taken it, or you?
Well, I doubt that Mr. Reimert has. Mr. Heaton still has plenty of time in his term to take it, and I know that Mr. Stubbs has. So, yes, right now, it's just you, thank you. So, let's see. You sent out a mailer to the township recently claiming to be an endorsed Republican. Who's endorsed you?
Anytime, and just for some background knowledge, anytime that you're endorsed by someone in your party that is a registered Republican, you are then an endorsed Republican.
So, if I endorse Mr. Stubbs, he's now an endorsed Republican, that is the biggest crock of crap that I've ever heard.
Try to keep this respectful.
Okay, well, I mean, the implication in the mailer is that she's been endorsed by, but yeah. So, since you've come into office, you've signed approximately 44 statements, claiming that you spent 50% of your trustee time on matters pertaining to the road department. You give me two months of, just at random, of anything specific you've done with the road department?
Well, I did spend quite a bit of time on, I believe, two different road levies. I mean, specifically.
Except that official trustee duty.
Well, it is not necessarily official trustee duty, right? That's going above and beyond what you're doing.
Okay, so the answer is basically no, thank you. So, speaking of spending all that time on the road levy, two years ago, we had a road levy, and we were putting signs out, and you refused to put signs out claiming that they were illegal because of the committee was no longer in existence. But yet, right now, you have a sign in your yard that I believe is illegal. Is that one okay?
We have since actually changed that law, where the committee does not have to be stated on the bottom of those signs any longer.
With the road levy signs?
I think for all signs, sir. I think it's across the board.
Well, then, you need to let the finance people at the Board of Elections know that, because when I spoke to them this afternoon, they said that that law was still very much in effect for candidate committees, and that the, any signs having a candidate's name on it must have a paid for by a committee that has the candidate's name in it.
Are you talking about my large sign in my yard?
No, I haven't looked at that. I'm talking about one that says paid for by WLC, which is not a legal campaign committee name. We're approaching five minutes.
I believe all my signs have that on there, but I.
Well, your signs do, because you have other signs in your yard that do not have that.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, I thought you were questioning my.
No, 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 no.
Specifically, okay. Okay, okay, I thought that they.
But I'm just letting you know you have a sign that whacks the proper stuff on.
I will look into that.
Okay, and you've got the distinction of being the only elected official in the six and a half years I've been coming to these meetings, that's actually taken off on a regular basis for family vacations.
I've missed two meetings.
You missed three meetings.
The one where it was COVID, actually, and so it was virtual, so I attended and did the meeting virtual in Florida.
Yes, you did, but you also missed the one in June, your first year, and you missed the July meeting, your second year, and you missed the COVID meeting, where you were in Florida for the COVID meeting you're speaking of, and then you missed this year's.
I believe I've missed two, sir.
I believe you missed three, but we can go back and check.
Wasn't comments?
No, but I'd just like to say, thank you much for letting me come up here.
Is there anyone else? With that, we're gonna move over to the fiscal officer report.
Okay, good evening again, everyone. First of all, I've given you minutes for two different meetings, the September 13 regular meeting and the September 18 special meeting, which was the JED meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as submitted.
I will second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've also sent you the September financial reports, which consist of the September 30 fund status report, the year-to-date cash summary by fund as of September 30, the month of September cash summary by fund, September's receipt listing, and September's payment listing. And there's only one item that I want to make note of, and that is receipts number 121 and 122. These receipts total a net of $357,240.39, and these represent the final settlements from the August real estate tax collection, and they are, excuse me, net of the tax collection fees. And as you review the receipt listing and the payment listing and compare it to the September cash summary by fund, those tax collection fees are included as expenditures, not as receipts. So, with that in mind, any questions about the financial statements? Hearing none? Could I have a motion to approve the September financial report? Authorize the payment of September bills, which are warrants 50517 to 50520, and vouchers 677 through 768, and that's for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments?
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Last month, you approved the resolution to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize the necessary tax levies for 2022, and I did submit your resolution to County Auditor Carl Keith. So, that is now in their hands, and I received a receipt back from them. I received a public records request this month from the Valley View Schools for information on the water tower that is jointly owned by Germantownship and Jackson Township. Of course, that was purchased for the use by the Valley View Water and Tour District, which, of course, has disbanded, and I'm working to provide that information that they've requested. And tonight, Mr. Holbrook, thank you very much, has sent me some information which should be helpful as I respond to the public records request. I attended three oversight committee meetings this month, the pool meeting on September 20th, the fire EMS meeting on October 4th, and the parks meeting on October 6th, and I was there to assist with the three oversight committees' budget review for 2022. And I was scheduled to attend the senior oversight committee meeting on October 7th for the same purpose, but that meeting was canceled due to illness. I want to remind all of the residents that Election Day is coming up on November 2nd. Germantownship's five mil, one, five-year, one-half mil replacement parks levy is issue number 12. And in addition, all three of our trustee seats are up for election, so I encourage all Germantownship residents to go out and vote. Also want to give a reminder, as Dr. Cross has mentioned, there is a public hearing concerning the JED on Saturday, November 6th at 1:00 PM in the Valley View Junior High Gymnasium in Farmersville. And this will be an official trustees meeting, so we will definitely need to have a quorum present out of our three trustees. Immediately following the public hearing, there will also be a special Germantownship trustee meeting in a different room at the junior high school to meet with Germantown, Farmersville, and Jackson representatives, as we've done in the past with our other JED meetings, and also with JED attorney, Rinda Waymer. And the purpose, as you stated earlier, Mr. Reimert, is to discuss the comments we receive at the public hearing. And finally, on behalf of my Germantown Lions Club, I wish to invite all Germantownship children to attend the annual Ghosts and Goblins Parade Costume Contest, and that will be held Sunday, Halloween night, October 31st, at Veterans Memorial Park immediately following Beggars Night. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Heaton. He.
First of all, I'd like to cover national night out. It was a success, as Dr. Cross had said. I'd like to thank Taste of Jerusalem and Officer Adam Gabir for providing the food, Farmer in the Deli for providing the cookies, Make-A-Run Golf Course for providing golf carts, the Germantownship Road Department for picking up and dropping off said golf carts, Officer Figgly and K-9 Grogo from the City of Hamilton Police Department, Germantownship Cert, Red Cross, and Skywarn, and especially all those who attended, so thank you for all those that came out. It's the people that show up that make it worth it, so. Last week, we picked up a second cruiser that was ordered this year, and it will be going to get outfitted later this week. We anticipate it will be up and running by mid-November, or at least we hope it will be up and running by mid-November. Health insurance, we received a renewal from Burnham and Flower in reviewing and discussing the renewal with Road Superintendent Holbrook. Renewal is the same medical plan approved last year. This year, it's within 4.89% increase. Last year, it was a 7.8% increase, and in 2019, it was over a 9% increase. Road Superintendent Holbrook and I believe that we should seize this opportunity, mostly due to the fact that we are still exempt from the Affordable Care Act.
And to that point, I believe that we typically do a resolution approving that. I was not prepared tonight for that resolution, so I will put that on my report in November.
Okay. I've already made contact with Ms. Close, and she has already linked our Facebook to the webpage with the JED information. And last, we, I would like to declare excess to be sold on auction by, by auction on GovDeals, 2016 Ford Explorer. That is the one that the vehicle I mentioned earlier will be replacing.
Resolution number?
That will be resolution 2021-37.
I'll introduce resolution 2021-37, a resolution to declare the 2016 police cruiser as XF and to be sold on GovDeals.
Is there a second to resolution 2021-37?
I will say.
Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Reimert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-37 is adopted.
Thank you all, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Holbrook?
Can I ask you something real quick? Did she just, Shawna, did she put a link on the Facebook to the website? Is that what she did?
Yes, the one with your website where it says JED Information, and then it's got three boxes below it, that's the link that she put in.
I'll do the same thing.
On our Facebook, the link to that.
I'll do the same thing.
So.
Let's have a few items on our report tonight. Just wanted to update the board on the 2021 chip seal program that we awarded back in April to Ray Handsley Incorporated. They completed that work last Friday, which included the chip sealing of Richard Road, Goodenback Road, North and South, Barlow Road, a couple sections of Moyer Road, East Kiefer in its entirety, and a section of West Kiefer. I think the total contract amount on that was approximately $81,957 and some change. I haven't got a invoice for that work yet, so that might change a little bit, but we try to go below that because we can't spend more than the contract amount. When they do the totals as far as the material that they use, then we'll get a closer idea of what we owe. So, when I get that bill off, forward it, obviously, to Mr. Heaton. Second item is just to report on the Ohio Department of Transportation Township Stimulus Grant that's on the table. Been working closely with the Montgomery County Engineers Office, Joe Dura, and the Assistant County Engineer, and also Mr. Gruner wrote a letter of support to the township for this project, which is one of the requirements to submit with the application. So, been working closely with Mrs. Longhorn with the ODOT Grant Department, and she's been a big help, so I hope to have that grant submitted by the end of the week. I think we have till November 19th, early November, to get it in, so we're still doing really good. Submission time has no bearing on where you're put in the queue. They, once they get them all, they open them out and start grading them, basically, so that's where we're at. On the grant for the Segal Road Repair and Resourcing Project that Mahady County estimate out for us, it's approximately $222,000, I think, is the amount we'll be asking for, so. More on that when I get the grant submitted, and then we'll have to wait till after the first of the year to see how it really goes. The only other thing I have to report on is it's fall time again, so the road department has swapped out their mowers for the tree limb mower, and we're gonna start trimming some of the brush back off the township roads, probably starting this week. Other than that, that's all I have.
Cool.
Hello, thank you. I do not have any old news for tonight. New news, I've written a few permits in the last 30 days, in addition on 725, a solar array on Dayton Germantown, and a pole barn on Germantown-Middletown. I was talking to the zoning commission and at our last meeting last week, and they had a question for the trustees. Is there any way that we could potentially get more signage for farm and machinery equipment, kind of like on the main roads? Because they have noticed recently that there's been a lot of possible traffic hazards with moving their large equipment on the roadway. Don't know?
Under the Ohio Department of Transportation's Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual, there are no signs that designate farm machinery. The W11-5 that everybody's familiar with, which is basically the two-griden tractor, that is strictly for crossing. That's when tractors cross the road. So, that would be like if a farmer owned property on both sides of the road and routinely moved roundbales or whatever across the roadway, they would erect.
A crossing sign.
You know, a crossing sign for a tractor to be careful in that area, because that's a hazard. As far as a general sign that tractors are gonna be everywhere, in reality, you could put, you could put one of those signs up at the beginning of every road in Germantownship, because there's farmland on every road in Germantownship.
Right, so I think one of the biggest concerns was when they would travel, you know, the direction they're supposed to travel on their side of the road, they would have to swing wide to turn sometimes, right? And when they swing wide, traffic would try to pass them on their right-hand side. So, and apparently, it's been a huge issue this year where it's not been an issue.
Is there, is there anyone in particular, like Rowland contacted you?
No.
Okay.
It was just something brought up at the meeting.
I would direct them, if that is occurring to them, if they can safely hit the plate, at least contact us. You know, they can, they don't have to contact us immediately if they can get a plate. Give us a call, and at the very least, we could send, we do this a lot of times when we have, we'll call in, we send out a letter to the registered owner saying, this was observed, you know, it is, this violation was observed, you need to be made aware of it. That way, if it's.
Son or daughter driving mom and dad's car.
Something gets taken care of some way, shape, or form.
Right.
Hopefully.
Okay.
So, we could probably do something along those lines. And if an officer's in the area, of course, I would expect them to act and stop the vehicle, which they are not supposed to pass on the right.
As far, as far as I'm aware, there's not been any type of accident actually happened. They didn't express that, but.
Only a matter of time.
Right, exactly. And the last thing on my report for tonight, I have had no update from the superintendent for the Board of Education on the Valley View Local School District project. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, and I start my, my report. I'll just mention on the Valley View Local School District project, I mean, they should be coming pretty quickly, right? Haley on that to start processing paperwork because they're gonna be building, so we will be, Haley will be heavily involved in that, hopefully bringing back some, some comments to you guys and keeping you guys up to speed on where that stands, but there's nothing as far as progress yet, so.
Yeah, they plan on breaking ground in spring of 2022. They're gonna need to get with it.
I reached out to Mr. Richards just last weekend and said, hey, just wanna make sure we're on the same page here, and he said, yeah, we understand, they can take some time, we think we have our ducks in a row, but we'll be coming to you shortly, so we'll see that. And I know you've been talking with him.
Mr. Reimert, can I interrupt with a quick question? Haley, when you do housing permits, there's a fee based on the square footage.
Yes.
Is there any fee for getting any permits or anything with this project?
There should be.
There is.
I mean.
I mean, it, yes.
We do have a resolution that contains commercial structures. Yep.
Okay, I have, most of my stuff is around the Parks Board, so as Mr. Heaton already mentioned, we have a parks levy coming up. There is a flyer out there, it's been notified to, or sent around to all the organizers of the VB base and all the different folks that use Kircher Park and the organizations there. I saw Judy Gillland also sent a couple of distributions she had, so, Dr. Cross, you'd ask about the information getting out there. There is this, this flyer, and it has a lot of good information. It's an actual base, obviously, and then this will get posted on the township's Facebook page, there'll be links to it there. I know Terry Johnson, who is running for Germantownship Council, he said he's sent over a thousand or two of these flyers out to people that he's looking to vote within Germantown, so the word is getting around. There's other things that need to be done, but hopefully, there'll be more efforts made up through November. Oversight Committee for the Parks Board recommended to approve the budget at the October meeting. As Mr. Heaton mentioned, he did attend the budget meeting, well, it was a meeting more than that, but the budget was reviewed there. Haley was there as well as a member of the Parks Board, so was well represented by Germantownship, and that budget has been recommended to be approved. They are planning currently Christmas with Santa in the gazebo. That will depend on what Germantown determines is appropriate with the level of COVID at that point in time. We've kicked around several other things, but there should be some kind of Christmas celebration. Last thing I'll talk about is the JED progress. There will be a public hearing, as Mr. Cross had already noted, which is on November 6th at 1:00 PM with a Germantownship trustee meeting directly following before we are the JED meeting, to determine if we'll make any changes based on that public hearing. We met this evening with several of the entities and council to discuss exactly the administrative procedure of that meeting. We didn't invite Evra and Jake because we didn't want it to be another public meeting, as it was short notice, we're trying to make sure we have the right administration, but Mr. Heaton was on that call and took notes on how we're going to proceed with that, to make sure we follow the correct procedures. One thing I'll point out that I wanted to make sure that we all are aware, shouldn't be an issue, we've all agreed with everything up to this point, but after the JED meetings, if we decide to move point, but, um, after the JED meetings, if we decide to move forward and take a vote at that November eighth meeting, which is the preliminary plane that we have drafted out, our November eighth regular scheduled trustee meeting a month from, basically, tonight, um, if we do not vote with a majority, or a unanimous three oh, yes, there is a provision that automatically goes to the ballot in the township. So I didn't recall it being automatic, but just want to make you guys aware of that. If it's two one, or any one of the things is two oh, it will go automatically to the ballot for the public to vote on in Germantown. So that's the only takeaway I had from that tonight. If you guys have any questions about what was spoken, we spoke for about forty minutes. It was mostly about, uh, how we would set up meetings, how we would call them to order, and have an administration for all four entities to hold the public hearing, so that's what that meeting was for. Any questions there? I have no questions.
No, I don't.
Okay. So I think we'll be hopefully organized enough for that one. Ms. Reed, over you.
All right. So, we had a fire oversight, um, meeting where the budget was approved. It was an interesting meeting, the tornadoes started went off, um, pretty early before even, we opened up the meeting, so we did get to go, um, hang out in the tornado shelter there for a little bit. So, um, but the budget was approved, uh, Mr. Houston was there, as well as Mr. Cleveland, where there were several different people there for representing the township. The senior center meeting was canceled, as Mr. Houston already stated, um, due to illness, and it has not been rescheduled yet, so I am unaware of the date of when that will be. So hopefully, I will let you know when that, when that happens. I did want to thank the police department and everyone that helped with the National Night Out. My boys really enjoyed seeing the K-9s, uh, they still are talking about it today, especially my younger two. Um, I thought it was a great success and possibly the biggest crowd I've seen there, so. Um, and, uh, the fire, back to the fire, I apologize. Fire station is having an open house where people can come and see the new fire station. Um, it's the same time as Saturday Nightmare or Saturday Night Out, from six to eight. So if you'd like to go see the new fire station, it'll be open this Saturday. That's all I have.
Mr. Stubbs?
All right, thanks. Uh, full budget passed, um, uh, finally got an explanation on this, from the city on the admin fee, um, and how that's been, uh, how they're using that, so. While I still wasn't happy with the five thousand dollars, it's not the ten that they had asked for a couple of years ago. And, um, I just have, I had a question on that, and, Mr. Houston, you may be able to help me. Um, the normal representative from the city could not attend, and Brian Wostick sat in and voted on that budget. I'm not sure that was appropriate, because, uh, basically, I may have to go back and look at it, it's not a huge deal, but I'm just not sure why he sat in to vote. I mean, we still had a quorum without him, he was a voting member, um, but I, I'm not sure that's our agreement, or I can't just send Tyler or Avra to a meeting I can't go to when we're specifically representing, so. I'll get with you later on that, because I'm just not sure, it's supposed to be proper going forward, I'm not sure that was the proper procedure.
Who, who was the one I, I can't recall? Who should have been there?
Rick Reed should have been there.
Okay.
And Brian Wostick came and voted in his place. So I'm just, I'm not sure.
I think that's probably a question for an attorney, whether it be our prosecutor, probably not, it might be Mr. Schiff, um, the city solicitor.
That may be, yeah, it may be in our agreement for the levy too, so I was just curious on that. Cemetery, all is well, Mark's doing a great job, the corn actually was harvested today on our, our property down there. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, adding a potential lean to, I think I've mentioned this before, on the east side of the existing building, uh, to do away with the, the shed and add some more parking, uh, for people to attend the cemetery, so we're working on that. Uh, can you, uh, Avra, can you let us know when the senior meeting is rescheduled for?
Yes, I don't have a.
Oh, I know, I know. But could you email that to?
Yeah.
Put us, yeah, just so we know what it is.
That shouldn't be a problem, yeah.
I appreciate it. WRCG, we're still trying to schedule a meeting, this has been two months, and people just can't, we can't get together for whatever reason, so that's, uh, on the docket. Um, Sunshine Bag will do it that next month. Uh, swamp update, I haven't done this in a while, so we're back to the swamp on Boomer Shine. If you notice, they put signage up at both crosses, crossings.
They did ask me permission to do that temporarily.
Okay.
For the, they had like some sort of power hike or something over the, oh, what was it, over the, the same weekend that the pretzel festival was.
Okay.
There was, there was gonna be quite a lot of traffic going through there, and, um, so yes, he did say, hey, I know we haven't met and discussed this yet, but we're having this event, would this be okay? And I said, sure, anything that's gonna keep people from getting run over.
Right.
But, yeah, they're way too low, and it's, it's a, they're a disaster.
And they hide weeds to them?
Yeah, they're a disaster, I can see that.
Okay, well, I, yeah.
Eventually, we're gonna get together and probably they'll put them up, but they'll be at the proper height, some setbacks and all that.
Well, that's what I was getting at, because there's just blind crossings coming out of the field.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're kind of a disaster right now.
To have the sign, I thought was actually, they did a good thing to put a sign up.
Right.
I'm not sure why they hide weeds to them.
I, I was glad that they at least asked.
Right, which is new, so. Yeah, so that's my swamp update, just, uh, keeping the Metro Park on their toes. Uh, let's see, do you have anything else? No, that's all I have for tonight.
With that, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at seven thirty-six.